Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 22, West Seneca Central School District Work Session. If we can begin with a pledge to the flag. Mr. Day, would you lead us in a pledge of the flag?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, just as a law.
Thank you. We're going to have our redistricting update now.
Yes, thank you. It's my pleasure to have with us tonight Tony Day, who is the Executive Director of the Western New York Education Service Council. Just last week, we had two very important milestones in the redistricting process. The first was that we held a community forum on Wednesday evening, and the second was we held the first meeting of our redistricting committee. And so, very early in the process, we wanted to have an opportunity to update the Board of Education and to get some feedback, so that we can move forward with some greater, I think, voice from the Board of Education around priorities and parameters that will help guide the future work of the committee. So it is my pleasure to welcome Tony, and I'll turn it over to him. Thank you, Tony.
Dr. Kruger.
Mr. Day, can I just take a moment to let you know that Sarah has been excused from the meeting this evening, and Vince will be joining us shortly.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Bedien. So tonight, there's really three pieces to what I'm hoping to do tonight. One is to kind of discuss with you what we hope to use as a process throughout the year, and then, and to get some feedback or answer questions that you might have. Then, the second is, it's very important, I know that many of you were at the community forum, and Mr. Molyneux, I believe you've had an opportunity to review the video of that piece, but I still think it's critical, because some of the feedback from the process was paused last year, because there are a number of community members that weren't really understanding the why, like, why are we doing this? So, it's really an important part of our process, I believe, is that we have to continuously go back and help reinforce. But I won't spend lots of time on those pieces, because what I'd really like to do is get into the third phase, which is really in terms of getting your feedback on priorities for the process, and also boundaries. You know, places where you want to make sure the committee works, and places where you may not want the committee to work. It would be my job to help facilitate that conversation, so that everybody's voice gets on the table, and then collectively, we get a sense of where the Board as a whole would like the committee to go. So, just very quickly, you know, Dr. Kruger did an excellent job last week at the community forum of painting a picture. You know, we're not doing redistricting to solve problems, we're doing it to make sure that here in West Seneca, every student get a very high-quality education, regardless of where they go to school. It's not educational lottery based on what school you go to, but there are opportunities, not exactly the same opportunities, but there's equitable facilities and classroom staffing ratios for all students, regardless of where they go to school. And that's really critical. And that, as staff members, staff members have teaching spaces that are best suited for their work, and that they're dedicated to their course of study, so that kids can then have the very best experiences. And when students do struggle, that the rooms that they're in for extra assistance to try to close that ground, they are suitable, appropriate places for kids to learn, and that would be in place from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. It's, you know, as Dr. Kruger called it, it's, the goal is creating an opportunity to create educational excellence for all by managing the resources of space and staff most efficiently. Over the course of the month of September, prior to actually engaging in any real work, I had an opportunity to meet with many people, review many different documents, I met with every member of the, I mean, I can't say every, almost every member of the redistricting process from last year. I spoke with every building principal, toured all the buildings, reviewed lots of documents, especially some of the feedback that came out before and after the process was beginning and paused. And some of the things I think are very important, is that there is a belief, the community wants a long-term plan, not a bunch of short-term decisions to fix an immediate problem. They're really looking for a thoughtful, long-range plan that works in phases, that has potential to really be in place and meet the district's needs for 10 years or more. There's a recognition that some redistricting efforts have occurred throughout the years, but one of the big-ish differences between now and, say, 15 years ago, there are many more professionals in the building dedicated to social and emotional health, counselors, psychologists, social workers, math interventionists, literacy interventionists, all of those are now important, mandatory parts of our programs, and they require a space in which to learn. And that, even as enrollment has declined in West Seneca through the years, it has challenged space through the need for those professionals to have those spaces to work in. There is some skepticism within the school community about the concept of redistricting in the process. There have been, through the years, there's a perception that there's been a bunch of reactions to situations that were done last minute, and now done quickly, right before school, and maybe not communicated as well, and people didn't, things were happening, people didn't understand. There was a move to close the school, and then a few years later, bring kids back into the school. And then, there was a process that started with a presentation in August of 2022, that some felt was disconnected, they weren't quite certain what its, why it was there, and what its purpose was. There was a consultant group that started in 2022, and their work was done fairly quickly. And then, a group of district leaders tried to shepherd the process throughout the rest of the 2022, into the 2023-24 school year, and it's had a series of fits and starts. So, to that, there's a lot, there's a perception that, you know, this process lacked some transparency, and that's a really important part from all staff members, is that the process is out in front, in the open, with people having an opportunity to speak of it while it happens. Strategic lovers, things I think are very important in order to have a successful process. And, you know, if you came to the meeting last week, you know that this process is not going to be without emotion, because people are talking, will be talking about, where will my student, where will my child be going to school? They like where they are. Do they have to move? Why do they have to move? So, it's very important that we talk about, what are the absolute priorities? What are we trying to accomplish in order to achieve excellence for everyone in our schools? That current reality is going to be really important, and we need to come back over and over. And as I mentioned, you, there are, there are many issues that'll be, that have been addressed. It's unlikely that there's one plan that might be able to solve it all, without having to significantly change the way schools and kids are organized in West Seneca. So, the more of these, the more of the priorities that the process would like to achieve, the more change it will create within the status quo. And that's something that we need to be out front about often, and make sure that people understand, that the problem will not solve itself by tinkering around the edges. In some places, some student, in order to create the priorities, some of the kids are going to have to move and attend in different schools. Can we create a plan that, over a period of time, phases in changes to minimize the number of kids and families that are impacted? That'll be a key to what we're trying to do. We've talked a lot about taking the time to do it correctly. You know, seeing a little bit, there's a, there's right now a tentative timeline to have final recommendations to the Board of Education before the end of the school year. However, the mantra I've been using is, you know, let's take the time to do it right. It's better to take more time and do it right than to rush and do it poorly. And so, if we're not ready by the end of the year, you know, you'll be informed throughout the process, and, you know, if you give us the go-ahead, this process may extend in order to make sure that we can do it well, and crafting thoughtful plans that are fully vetted, so that you can make the most informed decisions possible. And again, we're talking about really a strategic plan for the use of space that's rolled out in phases. And if there are, the more changes, the more things that have to happen, it's important to get a first set done properly, and then, and only then, you start the second set. So, you make sure that you're, when you're trying to navigate in the same water at the same time, oftentimes, the boat struggled to stay afloat. In terms of the process, you'll see that stage six is really coming back to this table in what I would envision as a long public meeting, where you would take a look at a number of plans thoroughly, and you ask every question possible, so that you can make an informed decision about which one you might want to support. But backing from that, there's steps along the way where we have to set the stage, which was me really getting prepared and understanding. We're in stage two right now, which is, you know, communicating clear priorities, and soon, next month, we would begin really taking a look at what work was accomplished thus far, reevaluating those against the current priorities, and determining whether or not they should be considered for, to go in-depth. And in a minute, I'll tell you what I mean by in-depth. At some point, we'll start to brainstorm other possibilities. So, are there other ways to accomplish the goals of the process that maybe have not yet been thought of? But the goal would be to get to a point, somewhere in March or April, February, March, where we would recommend a series, the committee would recommend a number of plans, based on your input, that they would go deep into. And by deep, I mean, here's the plan, but also anticipating, what are all the questions and considerations that would have to be made in order to implement the plan? Although, what about this? What if this? Trying to anticipate what they would be, and come up with a very best plan, a very best response. Hi, Mr. Vanderloep. Then, the next, another piece would be to have the basis of an implementation plan, not just here's the plan, but what do we see, is how would we roll this out, what kind of timeline would it take? And the final piece would be a fiscal outlook. What would be the financial impact of implementing such a plan? Only armed with that kind of data, would you be able to make an informed decision about what you feel is best. Critical element in the recommendation will also be that you've had feedback along the way. This will not be the first time, nor the last time, before you'll see me before the end of the process. You need to be informed about what ideas are being broached in the committee. We are, as we've had our first committee meeting, the plan is to put as detailed minutes of what was discussed, and make them very public to the entire school, West Seneca community, and to bring, and present to you periodically, so you know exactly what is being considered, what is being discussed. You have a chance to ask questions, raise issues, raise possible suggestions to go back. So that when you get to the end, it's not really like it's the first time you've heard, but it'll be a place to sit and say, here are, if you gave us ground rules for two plans, here are the two plans, let's go through them all, full chance to discuss them, and then, you know, with feedback from the public given to you to help you understand where the community, what their thoughts were. So, it's really trying to be transparent, thorough, and very detailed, so that you can make, you cannot, a decision this important, you can't make without all the information that you need. And so, your questions and comments will be important as well. In terms of process, you know, we want clarity of purpose, we want process transparency, and we want feedback. So, as the, as the committee does its work, some things have to go through the leadership committee, the leadership team, because they are the people that know the buildings and the operate, how it operates best from that picture. Their feedback helps develop agendas for the committee. The committee's work then comes to the Board and the public for feedback, or sometimes you will switch the process, and we'll get public input, Board input, prior to committee work. So that you're not always after the fact, but sometimes you're feeding in. But there's a constant cycle of Board, Committee participating in that. And what I mean, and the public, is not just parents, but it's also our staff members, and trying to get to non-parent parts of the district as well, because those members of the district will be impacted as well, and they should have a voice. We have a committee, you can't read all those names, we are now up to 34 people. We had, there were, I believe, 22 members of the committee last year, and they did a fine job and worked really hard, but there was a belief that there were some elements missing. We really wanted more representation from the east side of town, we needed some more staff members from the east side of town, and there were some leaders that we wanted to make sure, that would be critical in the process. The Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, when you start moving students, you end up moving staff to support them. That requires your human resource manager in the ability to help understand shifts in what it would take to manage collective bargaining agreements. We had our first committee meeting last week, it was well-attended, and the engagement was really solid throughout. So, just the current issues, just very quickly. One big issue is unbalanced, limited class spaces create class-size discrepancies. It is most impactful at the elementary schools. Class sizes are not that different between, at the middle level and the secondary level, they're actually fairly equitable between the two buildings, but it's at the elementary where in red, you see places where we have more students than we probably would want in a class. So, when you look, you see a lot of pink in fourth and fifth grade, are the intermediate grades here in West Seneca, you know, are averaging, grades three to five, they're probably averaging in some schools, 23 to 26. You know, and as a guideline, you really would, when you're trying to teach fourth grade, and there are 28 students in fourth grade, it's very difficult to do small-group instruction. You just, it's not, it's just not possible to manage and do any sort of real justice to small-group reading instruction. In whiteboard, places where there could be more kids, and you can see there is imbalance between some places within the district. Not all of this, these class-size issues are created by space, some of them are created by staffing levels as well. But, the goal of the process should be to create an opportunity and the capacity where space is not a limiting factor. Where if I gave Mrs. McQuinn, if, I can't give anything, if the district were able to provide two more teachers at Clinton Elementary to ease class sizes in fourth and fifth grade, Mrs. McCarty would not have a place to put them. There's just no physical space. That's really part of the big issue here. You know, inefficient, inefficient use of resources, some of our interventionists, when you walk the buildings, if you've had a chance, there are some small closets, I mean, they're not really, well, they're small, they're very small, and they've been repurposed, and you might have two teachers working there with three kids each, and there's eight people in a pretty small space. Some classrooms have been divided by four, and there are four kids, four or five kids working with interventionist times four, and you can just imagine, kids at risk, kids need focus, they need the ability to attend, and it becomes very difficult in some of these spaces. Some of the kids in the district don't attend school in an area that's close to them. Some of that has been created in order to create an economy of scale. For instance, for English as new language learners, in order to create, to be more efficient, students travel from all over the district, from the west side all the way to Northwood, or to East Middle or East High School, in order to attend E&amp;L instruction. My intuition is that early on, there were more E&amp;L students on the eastern side of the district, but over time, that population, as it has grown, has also taken stock in the west side. So, you will have kids, you know, living over by Winchester Potter, that would be going over to Northwood. And so, that's just a, that's been an, that's an idea, a challenge that people have cited, staff and parents. And again, I saw Mr. Vanderloep's mouth poised. If you have a question, just stop me, because I'm on a, I get on a roll, and, you know. And the other piece, you know, you see in the square, there, as I'm sure you're aware, there are 116 students that currently attend Allendale Elementary, that live within a stone's throw of Winchester Potter's. And Winchester Potter's is actually inside the Allendale Residence Area, and meanwhile, back at Allendale Elementary, there are classes with over 24, 25 students in them. So, this is one of the things that would indicate that's an area that is just an imbalance that's been created over a period of time through decisions made throughout the years. One of the other areas that has been cited is there is a concentration, all of your schools have seen growth in students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and you're now, in most of the schools, you're averaging in your high 30%, two of your elementary schools are running in the mid-50s, that would be Northwood and Winchester Potter's. And in addition, they have, you know, they have other high-risk, at-risk student groups in them, E&amp;L at Northwood, self-contained students in both schools. There's a concern that when you have that many high-risk kids, there is just a phenomenon that research says, that talks about a lowering of expectation by students, by families, and, you know, even despite their best efforts by staff. And so, there's some concern that if there was a way to try to create a greater uniformity of at-risk populations in the buildings, you would create greater equity for the kids. In some of our buildings, there are teachers that have no quite dedicated classroom spaces. This is most pronounced at West Elementary, where if you're a foreign language teacher, you're on a cart. If you are a self-contained teacher, you're oftentimes parking in an unused English-language arts room. And the reason why that's important is that teachers, when they start to work with kids, having their, a space that's dedicated and a resource-rich for the, and a configuration, like, if you drop self-contained, 15 to one kids that really need extra attention, and you just drop them into somebody else's classroom, the way the desks in the room are configured may not at all be ideal for that kind of instruction, yet the teachers have to try to make do with it. And one room, you can see it less, there's a 15 to one room, 15 students and one teacher, in a space that's probably no bigger than what we're sitting in. It might be, this space might be bigger than that. And again, it just creates, the right, wrong kind of spaces for kids. And one of the last, go ahead.
I think one of the things that we encounter when we have these conversations with the public is a lack of understanding of why certain moves were made in the first place, which have led to some of these current issues. So, my daughter, who's now 22-years-old, was in the last class here at West to go through sixth grade. That was the last class that sixth grade was held here, sixth grade was moved to the middle school. And I don't recall the reasoning why that happened. I assumed it had to do with space here, and more space at sixth grade. We really didn't ask questions at that time, because it just was the way it was. But, I think some of those past, past moves, I think there's, need to like tie some explanation to that, and kind of explain what, okay, so we did this then, this is why we did it, because I think that creates, because it probably made sense then, right? I'm gonna assume that it made sense at that time, and that, you know, this process, from time to time, you have to make, you have to address changes. You know, there will also, my neighborhood's 20-years-old, Princess States is, how old, how old?
Like 15.
Yeah. So, we're talking, how many, you know, hundreds and hundreds of houses, and where the population shift on the west side has become, come quite, you know, larger than it ever was. But, I just think that, when we see things like this result, or this is right now happening at the middle school, I don't think that was the case when they made that last move, however many years ago.
Right. Because when they, when they, when that move was done, Mike, what I would offer is that the move, and the demand by New York State Education Department to add intervention, increase, you know, and you've also tried correctly, from a resource point of view, to bring self-contained special education programs back into the district, rather than sending kids to expensive placements, but that with English as a new language interventions, those pieces weren't pressures when the decision was made then, but are pressures now. And so, these new, this new context has created situations that put new pressures and new forces that shift the context. So, I think it is important, some folks, you know, in an emotional process, trying to be cognitive and, you know, try and explain is good, but some people are only thinking here, and we have to try to, part of the process to educate, but also to listen in here. But I think your point is well-taken.
Yeah, going back even further, we closed the building, and now we're cramped for space, so.
So, yeah, and you can, you can give those answers, I can give you the politically correct reasons why a lot of those happened, or I can give you the honest reason why some of those reasons happened, but at the time, I know, like, the sixth graders were moved up. The thinking was, one of the major thoughts were, the superintendent and the school board at the time really wanted to get a more sixth, seventh, eighth-grade model, and fifth grade also into the middle schools, because they thought that was, that was what they thought was a really good learning environment, or that's what, that's what they supported. So, again, also, New York State was on us for budgetary issues, and some of the things we were looking at was getting rid of a couple buildings at the time, because we had too much space to be able to then put money in the current buildings we had, because New York State doesn't allow you to do certain things if you have too much space. And again, at the time, the thought was, we had too much space. Who knew what was going to happen in the long run? Some people did, some people didn't, and those were the decisions made. So, I don't know, I don't think there's any official agenda of why those reasons were made, there were some good reasons, good heart behind it, and then, again, I feel a lot of those were shortsighted and really weren't thought through, so.
Well, but, I think that, why I'm bringing up is, it needs to be part of the story. It needs, it's an important part of the story of how we got to this point. Well, Tony, Tony listed the number of different mandates that we're now, now facing, and the opportunities that we now have, that we didn't have back then, to create more dynamic spaces for children, to get UPK into our buildings. You didn't have those, those weren't the conversations you were having at, back then. You were in a spot where, as a Board member, we're in a financial crunch, we need this, that, so.
Yeah, and this, again, this was even before I was involved a lot of it. I think when we were on that first committee, there was only like three or four 611 classes, total.
Correct.
Like, I remember Kid McCarty last year telling us, like, there might have been four classes throughout the district, that were for, I don't know the different levels, but there was only like four of them. And now, I mean.
14?
14. And we probably could have more, so.
So, I think it's an important point, right? There's a context within the school community for basis for making decisions, and there's also outside forces that create a context for making decisions. And people, when they made decisions, whatever they were, at different times, they, I don't believe that they did them willy-nilly, I think they did them for a reason, but the context has changed and shifted, you know? And so, I think it is, rather than just bemoan whatever went on, I think it's important really to try, well, we have to have a historical perspective, but a commitment to say, what is our current context? What do we think the context is going to look like? And how do we build a plan that allows us to go forward?
Yeah, and that's just it, I'm not trying to, I'm not saying any, any of those moves along the line were a mistake. They were done with, with rationale, and now we're in a place where it's a new, a new time and a new quandary that we're in.
So, I think one of the, just the last issue or challenge is the idea of the Special Ed Continuum. You know, and, you know, just to me, you probably are aware, but there are levels of intensity that you can have in self-contained special education classrooms, six kids to a teacher, eight, 12, 15. So, one of the things that you would prefer to really be thoughtful about having, once you have kids in a class for special education, you have to foresee that you're going to offer it, once they get past that, you can only have a three-grade level span, once they get past that third-grade level, you have to have a place to go. Ideally, you would want to have the next step in the same building, because then, your, some of your most challenged students would have the same occupational therapist, the same physical therapist, the same speech pathologist, the same special education teacher, the same, all those pieces. But for instance, but now, with the district, had to make some decisions about where do we have space? So, I just bring up, like, at Clinton Elementary, there's a six to one for kindergarten and first-grade kids. When they age out, they can't stay at Clinton, because there's no space to put an intermediate, and the smallest, most at-risk kids are going to have to transfer. So, thoughtfully having, where can we place our Special Ed Continuum, so that students can have a full continuum within a building, would be a challenge.
And again, this may not be the place for some education for Ed. When we talk about what you just said, I really don't know if I have a grasp on it, are the, are these, when I mention a 611 class, are they like three-year cohorts or something? Are they?
You can have a three-year, three, three-year span, in ages of the kids.
Okay.
So, you can have a K, you can have it one to four, you can have it two to five, but it can't be more than three.
So, it's not a set thing, it's what we have established. Okay. And I'm assuming, again, we have 611 classes?
Yes.
Eight 111.
Eight 111.
Twelve 11.
Twelve 11.
And 15 to 1.
15 to 1.
Correct.
So, when I say 111, it's 15 to 1.
Teacher and aide.
Okay. And is that?
In some places, it's two aides or three aides, depending on the kids.
But, is that the set number, like, those levels? Or are we just picking and choosing?
No, those are New York State-approved.
Okay.
And you can't exceed, you can exceed them by usually like one, otherwise, you have to get away.
Or the opposite, say it's a 1211 class, but you could have 10 kids, and it's not full.
You can't exceed the number.
Okay. So, when we do an inventory of all the different types of classes we have, and we're offering, that's a set thing, 411?
Six.
Six, eight, 12, 15. And then, it bumps up to the normal Board-approved class sizes.
Then, kids would enter into an inclusion, special education would be serviced in general education classrooms.
Yes.
Where regular class-size limits would apply.
Okay, and that, and that would be with an aide or something in a class?
Right. So, when we talk about, we talk about classroom spaces, one of the things, you have to kind of like, there's general education and self-contained, and you have to have enough spaces to have your general ed classes and your self-contained.
And that leads me to my last question. So, we could have, in theory, Clinton, the 28 kids in a class, plus possibly an aide or two aides or three aides?
You could. You could have a special education teacher and a general education teacher.
Right. So, I just, again. Right, so that I just, again, it's not just those kids, it could be with, there could be additional people working in the same. I just wanted to get to what, what worst-case scenario we're dealing with as far as numbers, that's all.
I also want to be open and transparent. You have Board of Education class size guidelines that were approved in 1995 that established 28 kids in a classroom is okay. And that's the board's policy. I would tell you that in my experience, we, I would never want, I would never really want to have 28 kids on, just be, we don't want 28 kids in the class.
I, I know we had discussions of looking to lower that number, but look at where we'd be right now. If we did, we'd be, we may have had to move some kids.
That's why, establishing a high ceiling gives you much more flexibility than a low ceiling. So.
But we don't want to be there.
But you would target, like when kids are in fourth grade, ideally, 21 to 23 is pretty workable. And younger kids, where they're learning to try to, really trying to learn the code, you'd want smaller numbers. That doesn't mean you can't have them, but I'm just saying, I mean, we, you would prefer your kids not be in a room, you'd rather have your kid in a room of 21 than 28. Because there's two more reading groups that can, there's two less reading groups the teacher has to try to do.
Right. Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
Throughout this process, one of the things, you know, there are a number of things that have come up that people are interested in trying to see if opportunities can be used to create them. A family support center, I'm not gonna spend time going through what all of these things are. All of the things that you see up on the screen would really be beneficial to students. Especially in a district where you have a growing increase in economic need and different social emotional strains. A family support center, which is really a way for families to link to services and to use the school as a conduit. You know, it's something that we've, that I've had great experience in my own career and I would highly recommend, but it takes some space to do it. Universal pre-K, making it part, having that opportunity for all elementary schools would be an opportunity that would be beneficial. So, all those things, you know, and the other one is, you know, when you have, when you have to, when you have kids in small, the more places you break kids into, you have to divide differently. And sometimes the division is awkward. When you combine and create an economy of scale, you can create more efficient use of staff. So, for instance, Winchester Potter in third, second grade, there are 47 students. So, the question there for a principal is, do I have 23 and a half, 23 and 24 kids in second grade? Or do I have 15, 15, 17? That is the, that's the, the difficulty with the, with smaller settings like that is that you create a more intimate, smaller school for kids, which is good, but you also create more difficult decisions at times for staffing, for administrators. So, I won't go through, I mean, I try to explain this, when you see this, this is the community's feedback and you can't, I'm not sure you can see, I'm very sure you can't see it, because I can barely see it here. But anytime you see color going across the screen, that means whether you are administrator, staff, community members, students, parents, or all, you think these are very important. And you can see where the colors align here with class size discrepancies, inappropriate class sizes, concentration of higher-risk kids, inefficient use of space, lack of space providing, difficulty in providing quality experiences, and inappropriate instructional settings. Those are the places where the community was pretty unified, as those are the things that were most, of most interest. Places where you don't see color, facilities at all schools, facilities being available at all schools, for instance. In some schools, they're used so frequently that you can't get into them by the kids. And there's so many kids, there's so many kid programs, outside groups can't use them. In other places, there's plenty of room. Which means that parents didn't have to travel across the district where community members do. That wasn't as much of a concern. Some students don't attend the closest school, you can see there was not that much color there. Some students have to travel across the district, there wasn't as much, you know, and the, the numbers were really about trying to get to where you had 40% or more thought it was critical, or 70% or more thought it was important. That's when things turned color. So, at our committee meeting, I asked our committee to take a look at that feedback, have conversations at their table, and we were working over here, we broke the committee into one, two, five groups. And we asked each group to go through and engage, and for each one of those challenges, assign a value to it. As either critical, and we absolutely have to address this issue through the process, or if possible, important, and we should do it if possible. So, it creates two layers. And then, then some were, the groups were able to say, I don't think it's even an issue and we shouldn't try to deal with it. So, this was their feedback, and where you see the Ms, all right, that was must be done. We have to do this. So, the committee would recommend that enroll, we have to make sure we address the class size discrepancies at the elementary level, the lack of space that creates inappropriate class sizes at the elementary, unbalanced enrollments resulting in an inefficient use of space. And you can see that in some, at the elementary level, you can see it very much so at the middle level. You know, it's a very stark difference between West, where people are working in small intervention places, and at East, a speech pathologist has an entire classroom to work with between three and four kids at a time. You also have a lack of space was creating inappropriate instructional settings, special area teachers having their own dedicated spaces, and really trying to thoughtfully place the intermediate of the special education classrooms. So, this slide is basically what the committee would recommend as priorities. That the most important priorities to try to address through the process are those at the top. Address enrollment issues, create class size, and eliminate variables that create class size discrepancies. Try to mitigate the lack of space that creates inappropriate class sizes at the elementary. Try to mitigate unbalanced enrollments that result in an inefficient use of resources and space. Try to correct the lack of space that interferes with providing quality experiences for some students. You know, and just for clarity, that's like when, there's a school that has to have three open houses because there's so many, it wasn't built to have that many cars in a parking lot at the same time. And that, when they have special events, buses have to bring kids in from the school down the street because there's not enough room. It's though, some schools don't have a meeting room big enough to hold a special student event while others have auditoriums. So, it's not that everybody has to have the same, but they have to have similar. Special area teachers and Special Ed teachers who don't have dedicated space have to travel, and trying to be thoughtful about where we place elementary self-contained classes. If possible, the committee wants to study trying to balance at-risk kids across schools. But they didn't understand the issue well enough and wanted to table it and have more conversation. They, if possible, to try to mitigate kids traveling across the district, or, and if possible, having kids attend the closest school. And then, if possible, facilities for all schools should be available after school hours. So, you can see where it puts its most urgent and down below. And I just engage, would ask you, you know, what are your thoughts? Do they look realistic? Are you okay, are you accepting of them being like tiered priorities? Or do you have some thoughts and feedback for the committee about potentially shifting it? Or do you have questions perhaps?
I have one question. Sorry.
Sounds like you came back there, so I'm like, wow, that was pretty good.
Magic trick. Yeah, so, and we're just seeing that information for the first time tonight, so I think it'd be helpful to get these presentations in advance in the future. That said, have you been able to do kind of a delta between what the committee's priorities were and then the community data that you showed?
They're very highly aligned.
Okay.
They're highly aligned. The discussion about self-contained classes place was, you know, trying to correct and thoughtfully place self-contained classes. The committee, there was not as much support from the public. My belief is that if people don't understand the nature of the classes and the importance of putting together, they won't value it as important, but people working in the schools and with those populations would. That was probably the only one that moved into, that was, tended to be different from where the community's feedback was.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I agree with you, trying to get the tightness of the timing between the meetings made it challenging. And I would agree, and so, you don't have to, you're, you're not resolving and adopting formally. What I'm just trying to get is feedback, does that look like a good place for the committee to start? In terms of, the first thing we have to do when you build a plan is make sure it addresses the top bullets. And then, if you can, you try to go for the lower bullets. That's really what the committee's asking. Are you okay with those being starting points?
Are we looking at the conversation about the higher-risk students? Because that could very easily move up to the top.
If, if the committee wanted to change the priority, because we'll address that at the next meeting, if the committee would want to change that, we would bring it to you and share with you that conversation and their thoughts and ask for your feedback back.
All right, because it says study needed. So, are there action steps being taken to study that?
Well, there's a lot of research and we can pull that out and have the conversation. There were a lot of people that didn't quite understand what that meant. And so, like what we'd like to be able to do is show actual student populations in the buildings. And they're at, you know, with how many free reduced lunch kids, Special Ed students, E and L students are there as a percentage of the population? And then show, talk about some of the research bullets that would, you know, it's a little bit of a mix, so we need to bring that out too. But that's, the study, we're not gonna try and do, a full research study could take, you know, months. We have to gather the research that is most available and talk about why it's considered potentially an issue, and then get feedback from the staff about, from the committee about whether to elevate it or not.
I, I figured we'd be having conversations like this. I guess if anyone else doesn't have any questions, I have a couple. The first question is, what are we considering? High, higher-risk students? What, what are all the categories under that category?
I would put it simply, my, my easy-to-understand definition, students that require extra resources in order to meet academic standards are those students that, are those students that are at potential risk because of the situations, the situations they bring with them to school. Lack of exposure, coming into, students that are struggling entering schools with some of the elements of literacy that need to be in place prior to. Students that come from more, from more economically disadvantaged homes aren't guaranteed to be at risk, but as a rule, as a correlation, they are at higher risk than students that don't.
And these are actually, if I can just elaborate on that, these are the subgroups that New York State evaluates us on from an accountability standpoint. So, subgroups include students with disabilities, our English language learners, our economically disadvantaged students. Those are all subgroup categories from an accountability standpoint that New York State is holding us accountable for. All students making adequate progress. When you have multiple categories of a student, the risk is even greater. For example, if you're a socio, socio-economically disadvantaged student who also comes from a home where English is not the predominant language, that's now two factors making that child at greater risk and therefore in need of greater support and greater intervention potentially for them to make adequate progress.
So, it does not mean that kids can't meet standards and have academic success, but it puts them at risk. So, for instance, the graduation rate generally a year at West Seneca is, I believe, somewhere around 90%. Students that come from economically disadvantaged homes are probably, like, if I remember correctly, they're, generally, they're like 82. So, it's not that they, like, these kids can't, but it's, they are more, they are more likely to struggle than students without these.
So, I would say that the best way of meeting those and overcoming those barriers are to have the greatest level of support at the earliest ages, and that only possible through smaller class sizes. That's without outside intervention. That's without interventionalists, right? So, if you have a child ready to read at second grade, they're in a really good spot. But the more kids you have in those first kindergarten, first, second grade classes, the more challenging that becomes for that teacher. So, when that doesn't happen, then we're talking, at third grade, we're talking about AIS teachers coming in, reading teachers coming in, interventionalists coming in. So, when you have this disparity of 14 over here and 26 over here, who's got the best child at coming out of the other end of that, ready to read? Right, so if we want, you brought this up before and very wisely, that if we put the support at those early ages, we're less likely to need all these other things. My question is, what are the implications this have on the middle school? And, because that's one of the areas that we're looking at, that's having an issue with space. So, I don't see anything up there about the middle school, so that's my question.
Well, I don't find a lot of evidence of class size discrepancy at the secondary level. There's space issues where teachers don't have space. But when you look at class sizes, average class sizes in core subjects at both middle and high school, they are within like it's 22-point something in West and 21-point something in East. They're not the same, but they're equitable.
Okay.
So, it's really as they funnel to those facilities, there's enough, there are staff there to create class sizes that people would find acceptable. But the space issue becomes difficult for the special education self-contained support and for the foreign language teachers trying to provide rich experiences for kids in language.
So, part of that question then, in terms of current configurations, would it be a consideration to move six back into an elementary building?
Well, that's the next question. The next set of questions for you is, begin to have some conversation about what are the boundaries for them? Are there boundaries that you would like the committee to honor? As, or the things you want them to consider or things you do not want them to consider? Because the committee is very desirous of getting that kind of feedback. They want to know where the playground is. And they're, and that may, that won't be decided in one setting. And, you know, I'm happy to come back often to do it. But that is something the committee really felt strongly that that would be helpful to know. What are some of those boundaries?
Oh, I just, I just want to go back to the minimizing concentration of higher-risk students. The, I just want to go back to that. When, when we say minimizing concentration of higher-risk students, these categories that, that falls under, the question is, do we want to spread these kids? I just want to understand what that is actually being asked. Are we talking about like, let's?
You would have to create configurations where whatever, every building would have similar percentages of kids with those risk factors.
Okay, so, so, I guess part of my, I don't want to say concern, but like Title, Title IX?
Title one.
Title one. Sorry. Title one, I look at it as, if we have a school, we have, how many schools are Title One right now?
Two at the elementary.
Two at the elementary. We're able to get funds, extra funds to use at those buildings because it's a Title One building. If we equally distribute throughout the district, this is all, socio-economically challenged people, then we lose Title One funding if we're not at a certain percentage. Am I wrong?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so.
I mean, I guess the answer would be maybe, it depends on how you put it back together.
Exactly, so I, I guess I, I'm more looking at these things as being broken up a little differently than just saying, hi, you know, minimize higher, I'd like to see it broken down more when we work on it. Because, again, kids with disabilities, we might have a different idea with what we want to do versus economically challenged kids. I mean, there may be kids with disabilities that are economically challenged, but I'm, I, am I, I know I'm not good at making myself clear, but.
No, I, I understand your perspective entirely, and I think the symptom that we're trying to respond to is the current situation is not by design and with intention. It's where did we have space to put particular programs? Not because it's where they're best suited and best situated for. So, for example, if we take Northwood and Winchester Potters, those two buildings, which are already our Title One schools where there's inherent extra need for those students and challenges that they, that they bring. Only because there was space available, we've also now added additional strain and burden to those schools because those schools house our English language learner programs and self-contained classrooms. Not because we thought that was the best solution, but because there was space. And so, even if socio-economically the buildings remain the same, my advocacy or what I would hope through this process is that we can put other particular groups of students that have unique needs, like self-contained students or our English language learners, that those might be placed in a different school building so that we're more equitably distributing students of need or programs of need, because right now, we have some buildings that are very strained with the amount of student need that they have of the population. And other buildings that have less socio-economic need do not have any English language learners, and because of space, have no or very few self-contained classrooms.
And I agree with that. That's why I guess I'm asking is I don't like how vague. That's why I guess I'm asking is I don't like how vague that statement is to even consider whether it's important or not. But just giving my two cents.
It's vague at this point because it's not like we're already in a direction of this population is higher risk and that's the one that we want to look at redistributing. It's looking at all of those different factors. Is there a better way to reevaluate how we place them so that they have the supports that they need? Because while it might be nice for you to be in your closest school, there still is like a 611, it'd be kind of like ICU. You wouldn't want to have one ICU in a hospital. You'd have multiple rooms because you have all of those specialties in one place, right? That's how a 611 works. You want to have a few probably in a similar location because you have all of these different specialties that support it. But if you also have all of your ELL there, all of those support specialists in that same area, it might take away from the general building needs because you have so many specialties there.
But currently we're talking about right now, it's under the if possible category.
Let's look at what we've got and see what we need.
Right. Whereas other stuff is like they're thinking it's mandatory. I think, I think if you were to break it down a little better, those would, I think those would bump up immediately.
The challenge is trying to help large numbers of people understand a complex situation in one line and a circle.
I understand. Yeah, I understand. And again, we're not talking about the survey. We're talking about what now the committee feels.
Actually, we have to spend more time because there are a lot of, there are people on the committee that understood the issue and there were people that didn't. And that's what we need to spend time to help build, much like you're doing here, we have to spend some time with the committee to help build a shared understanding of what that.
Right. So by keeping things though, if possible, you don't overload the man, because there's going to be, every variable you add, the more complex it becomes. So if you don't want this thing to break, like, oh, we can't do that now because these two things were, we added. Start with the most essential things and what that would look like and what that would necessitate and then see if possibly we can even, now we can slide this in. And look at that. This works better now. So that's why I think those things, any if possible, make sense. Yeah, that's all I have.
Let me just, and I believe there's a time constraint right now, right? So here's what I would suggest. And Ms. Greenberg, I agree with you that, you know, I'm not asking for your etched in stone, but right now, like what I would like to say is we are going to, we're just in the very, very beginnings of the work. I do agree with Mr. Vandeleer. If you have too much up top, then you have no focus, you're focused on too much, you focus on nothing. So we're trying to say, let's do this, but then like all those things would be great to achieve and is it possible? What I would ask is if we can come back, what I'd also say is, I'm, I'm willing to come back anytime to help have these conversations. But one of the things that I would like to be able to have you consider for when I come back again is, you know, what exactly is, are you asking the committee to do? So, and so I drafted kind of a, a starting point. And it states that by the end of the 24, 25 school year, the committee should offer a recommendation with parenthetically S. One or more recommendations to the board that meet the established priorities following feedback, which still has, we need more. And then all the options include feedback from the community and the board, comprehensive set of anticipated issues and questions, a draft implementation timeline or plan. And one of the things that, and then a project, a statement of projected short and long-term fiscal impact. We shouldn't bring a plan to you that we don't know what all, the devil's in the details. What are the details? What do we think is the best answer? What's our plan to implement? And what do we think is the financial impact on the district? To get to that, to continue on, to really take a look at that, one of the things I would ask you to consider is, we're not going to answer any of these tonight and I'll ask Dr. Krueger for an opportunity to perhaps come back and Mr. Beadie, but how many plans would you like the committee to bring to you for its final consideration? If you bring one plan, it's either yes or no, and you may not get anywhere. Two or a small number that you might be able to then, somebody could make, the board could make a motion to adopt one and you could pick from a small number. If you get too many, will you be able to manage the sheer volume of information to be able to do it? So one of the things you may want to consider as a board is feedback to the committee. How many fully fleshed out recommendations might you like to have at the end? Then, do any of the plans or all the plans need to maintain the current district configuration? Does anything, do you need a plan that keeps things like they currently are? Elementary K to five, two middle schools, six to eight, two nine to 12 high schools? Again, no answers tonight, just begin to ruminate in your head. So if you said we want two plans, does one of them have to remain, does one of them have to be like that or not? Or could it be different? Could a plan or proposal consolidate grade levels into a building to create more efficient use of space? That could be having all of the fifth and sixth, like some schools have an intermediate building where the fourth and fifth graders is K to three and then four to five. Some, one district has a K to one world. They put their primary kids, early reading, early literacy in one spot and they put intermediate kids in others. So is that, that would break potentially a neighborhood elementary school. Could you have different ways of grouping secondary classes? So the, again, it's just what's a, can a proposal, if you ask for three, could one or more of them have consolidated grade levels that might allow that to occur? Do you have to have the same configuration across the district? So could the west side have neighborhood elementary schools and the east side have a K to two building and a three to five building? Would it be important for you to have the same configuration on both sides? Could you have, could, in order to meet unique space needs in buildings, could you have a five to eight middle school and a six to eight middle school? And, you know, can the implementation of a plan or proposal require expenses that would require a capital improvement project or an annual budget in excess of the local tax levy cap? My recommend, my feedback to the committee was, we should not, you should not think of either one of those things. But it's up for you. Like if somebody said, well, why don't we just build a new wing on west middle? Well, what they don't understand is when you have an empty wing at east middle, you will never get building aid from the state to build new construction. And, you know, going over the tax levy cap in a town that is fairly conservative fiscally would be quite a challenge to get to 60% and the potential impact could be disastrous. And the other thing, you know, can a plan or proposal include the reopening of Winchester Elementary as a school? You know, that's a thought, that's something to think about because it's not as simple as just putting kids back in. It requires another principal. It requires another custodian. It requires other support personnel. But those are questions that, you know, we, I would love to be able to come back and spend some more time just kind of walking through and doing pieces. So the more boundaries for the committee, they can do their work and present, they can work more efficiently and present plans that they can really streamline their efforts. So those are all kind of the, those boundary questions are important so that at the end, the committee does not recommend plans that nobody said, well, we can't do that. Let's not do that. They would like to get some of that feedback early on. So I'd ask for an opportunity perhaps to have some conversation at a future meeting.
Yeah, Tony, do you think that each one of those proposals that come back to us, so say we ask for three proposals, would each of those proposals come with a price tag?
We would have, we would talk, I would work with Mr. Teal on what is, what is the short-term and long-term potential impact of doing it? What do we think it would be? You know, and whether, and with our best guess in current situation, and of course in an era where state aid is fluctuating at best, what is our best guess about our ability to maintain, stay within a tax gap by implementing these plans?
Yes. I mean, because if we're, so there's two different questions there. So the question is, would we be even interested in considering going beyond the tax gap? And if the answer is no, then we'd have to know, I, I understand the estimate and everything, but until there's a price tag on that, it would be really hard pressed to make a decision on.
Correct.
Which one fits us best.
If a, if a configure, if a recommendation would require additional staff, that's really a big issue, right? And they did have to cost out what that increase would be and whether, you know, given our best understanding of where state aid's going to head and what the current tax levy cap is and its trajectory, you know, what do we think would be the ability to maintain?
And from my perspective, I think that is most directly correlated to the last bullet point here. You know, is, is the committee able to consider Winchester Elementary being reopened as a school? There would be financial implications for that. Are we going to go from nine schools to 10 schools, which has staffing implications? If we're working within the nine schools that we currently have or some variation of that, that's going to be critical information for the committee to know very early on in the process. One additional point that I would just ask, that as we're reflecting on these questions and preparing for a future conversation, because our goal is to do this right, long-term, my hope would be that any of our plans do not have our building from day one, that this change goes into effect at capacity. We need to be able to be smart, to be nimble, to respond to changes that may need to come our way, whether that is increased special education classes or the expansion of UPK grant funds. Right now, and again, it's simply because there was the space available, we have two elementary schools that house UPK and that's Northwood and Winchester-Potters, which again, that's your youngest learners, kiddos that are coming to us, that might be three, not yet four in pre-K. Is pre-K, when we look at the grade level configurations, is having pre-K a priority and having that ability to have the space in each of our schools? So my, my advocacy would be that we not only look at this as kindergarten through 12th grade, but there's also some thoughtfulness around pre-K because how we address that might have implications for the configurations.
Anyone else have a question?
I just had one question about like how frequently you were planning to update the board. My personal preference would be more frequently so that we can give you the feedback that you're seeking and the committee is seeking almost in real time, but I didn't know if, you know, how you were thinking about the updates.
Well, in another day and time, I had more say on the agenda. But now it's like, I'm willing to come whenever, but I, there's, you know, there's other things the, the district has to do besides this, but I'm willing to come, you know, you know, whenever you want on a monthly basis and kind of keep you updated in that fashion. I think more is going to be better in order to help you. Because being, having conversations about those questions will really aid the process. And I think that's one of the best things the board could do is begin to have these kinds of conversations and ask those good questions and bring that back. The clearer the boundaries, the better plans you're going to get at the end.
How often are you meeting with the committee?
Well, right now we're scheduling monthly, but as needed, we can go, we can add or we could extend. So.
Because I just kind of feel the same way as Marla, like if you were having a committee meeting, maybe after a committee meeting, maybe great to sit down with us just so we can hear the feedback and get some questions at that point.
I'm, I'm planning on it honestly, but I don't want to, it's, you know.
No, I think, I think this is a great discussion.
Mr. Krueger would have to find ways, you know, to schedule it in and.
I would, I would, I would support it.
So one thing, just thinking of the timing of some things that are scheduled, if I'm not mistaken, the next redistricting committee meeting is November 17th?
Twenty-first.
Okay. We have our, our board meeting November 12th. We could invite Mr. Day to the November 12th meeting. That gives you some time to reflect on the questions that were presented tonight that were not really adequately prepared, I think, to do a deep dive into those questions, but to carve out time on November 12th to really be prepared to respond to the questions that were posed. That would give parameters and guidance for Tony to work with the committee later in November. And then we can certainly, following that November 21st committee meeting, have a report and feedback that comes back to the board so that we're, we're meeting regularly with Tony, either prior to or following a redistricting committee meeting.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, as long as November 12th, we have, I, I can't personally guarantee you that I'm going to be quick. I have a lot of things that I want to address, talk about. I don't know how most of this board feels about any of this. So I was hoping tonight and that when we do that, we can really get some of these answers. I think the worst thing we could do is not know how we feel as a group and then let that committee meet. I don't think they should ever meet again if we don't decide how we feel on things. So that's, I would really like that opportunity to just figure it out.
So that's why the timeliness of that makes a lot of sense to come back on the 12th and also having it, the conversation at an open meeting, that we're sharing our questions with you and our answers with you in an open meeting. Not through an email.
Correct.
That's going to aid this process.
So do we have time at that meeting to take care of all this?
Make it.
That's where I'm at. That's when, I don't know what the agenda is, I don't know what time, at six o'clock, I'm assuming it's there?
I just got to check my, whether I'm coming back from Malta in time for the 12th. So I feel very, I think I'm coming back the day before, but I get a little confused when I'm going across the ocean and I don't know what day it is anymore. So, but I'm pretty sure that I'm back on the 11th and I could be here on the 12th. One of the things the committee talked about and I think has some potential is a kind of a, a work session of the committee with the board at a juncture for an extended period of time. Not trying to squeeze it into a board meeting, but you know, like you have a budget hearing and you take time just to do the budget and you do it over a longer period of time. It may behoove you to even think about having some more extended time early in the process. Like this kind of conversation will take, you know, like this, that might be two meetings worth of time, you know, to do it thoughtfully, to kind of work it through and, because you're going to have quite, you're going to have reasonable questions, like good questions to ask and you want conversation. So, but I think I'm willing to come on a monthly basis and keep, because there's lots for the committee to do before we get into the real essence of this plan or, you know, which ones. Because by the time we get to January, February, we would need some more guidance, some clarity so that we would, as a committee, we would know which ideas to really go after because they're going to fit within the guidelines.
Another consideration, thank you, would be that we can schedule a work session. You can schedule as many work sessions as you would like. So if either Tony is not back for November 12th or we simply want to carve out time for this agenda item only, that could occur at a work session. Work session, of course, you're not voting on anything, but we can certainly have, have discussion around that. So we could schedule an additional meeting if either the 12th doesn't work or you want this to be a single agenda item for the evening.
I definitely think we can get some sort of consensus, figure that out, how we want to handle that. Because again, I, I don't want to take up too much more of the time, but one of the thoughts I had with this process was, I don't know personally, I don't necessarily want to have to debate it now, we can debate it at the next meeting, is I don't know that I want to give many limitations to the committee immediately. I'd kind of almost like to see what all the ideas are and then we can help them whittle down what we want to go farther on as opposed to immediately saying, I don't want, just, again, just me speaking the way I feel. I don't want to immediately cut anything off like this soon. So again, having had conversation with the board, I think that's perfect, that we're going to do it at some point before the next meeting to determine how we want to handle all that.
Well, I, I think, I feel this way, that we understand the problems have been identified and that we're looking for solutions to solve those problems. So, and they, the board and the community have already identified what as the most critical concerns are. So the limitations, I agree, but we don't want to say, well, you have to have the current configuration. Okay, well then, what does that leave us?
Right.
Right? So, and we don't want to say, well, there needs to be some guardrails up around the expense. There needs to be some guardrails up around the number of proposals that we're willing to see. So we give them, we give them an avenue, okay, within this parameter, go, go.
So I respect that. I just don't know that I'm ready at this juncture to do that. I would, I mean, there's, what I'm saying is immediately, I would almost like to have the committee meet, brainstorm some more and then we can start saying, look, that might be too costly, we don't want to go that route. But I don't want to, I don't want to take anything off the table at this point, meaning by the time they meet again.
Here's what, here's what I'm going to recommend to the committee, given while you guys continue to have the conversations, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Beadie, and you'd like to hear some ideas. Before you put guardrails up that might eliminate ideas, you want to potentially see some ideas. When you interpret the feedback from the school community, there is a schism, there is a clear division. Some people want tradition, some people are willing to look at other things. And I think that's a starting point for the committee. What options can we, what things might we be able to do within the current configuration? And what are some creative alternatives? And play those out and then start to bring some of the, some of the, some of the thinking And play those out, and then start to bring some of the, some of the thinking to you to hear what people are talking about, and you can give us feedback, because, because I mean, when you look at the feedback, it's pretty clear, I mean, you look, it's very clear, there's a 50 to 60% of the people have this heartfelt east-west thing.
Well, with all due respect, it's under 1,000 people that replied to the survey. There's way more people that live in this community, so I don't necessarily think that, at this point, I think if, I guess what I'm asking is, and I made a joke to my wife, it's almost, almost like a, like Who's Got Talent or whatever, I'd like to eliminate stuff a little farther down the line than in the next month. That, you know what I mean? Like, again, we, we got 1,000 responses, we kind of get a good feel for the community on what they want, so we're not looking at, okay, let's sell five buildings, stuff like that, like, I get that. But what I don't want to do is, you know, I just, I don't, I don't, I'd like to, I'd like to brainstorm some more and get a list of all the ideas that are available to look at, and then come up with the parameters. The committee might have some, I know I've got a list.
We have to have a conversation that you're, what, all the board members?
Correct.
Because what you're asking for is a process that will take, will double the length of time for the process.
Again, I told you.
Because I'm just being honest.
It's just me speaking right now, and that's why I said I don't want to debate it now, but I do want to address.
Maybe we can have that conversation more on the 12. I am probably going to be back for the 12.
Okay.
It might look a little blurry, but I'll.
You're going to fly in from, did you say Malta?
Yes. So, but I'll be back.
Your arms will be tired.
I'll be tired, so.
If I could just add, just for clarity, I think what they were looking for on the boundaries is exactly what you're saying, is you're, he's saying, would you be okay with more than one? Your answer is yes.
Yes.
Would you want configuration? We're going to say, yes, we want that one is an option, and one or more is not. So you, you're thinking that we're closing the box on it.
Yes, that's, so.
He's not closing the box.
Right, so she's my interpreter.
He's creating a box with an open lid.
Because the idea would be, my recommendation would be get to have two or three full, well-thought-out plans, right? And then what would you like those three to kind of have, so you can see what they look and sound like, and how well do they solve the issues, and how well do they help create the opportunities?
But, but again, and I know, again, for the 12, I'm, what I'm looking for at some point, when we have plans that we decided not to look into further, I want to know why.
Because part of the process is, one of the things is, yeah, let's have, start fooling around with other possible configurations, so that the team's going to have to work on. What are some other possible configurations? What would be the advantages? What are the challenges? And then we can, my job is to report to you, what are, here's the kinds of things they were thinking about, and here's what they thought were the advantages and challenges. You need to know all that along the way.
That's amazing, that's perfect. That's why I was concerned it wasn't going to happen. We weren't going to hear about the stuff we weren't moving forward on.
I just want, that what they would just, that what the committee doesn't want to do is go down rabbit holes and find out later on that we spent all this time and nobody, that's not what the board wants.
That's what I'd like to underscore, in advocacy for the committee, who are volunteers, volunteering their time, I do believe that it's fair, early on, for the board to give parameters to the committee, because we, we have a history that this committee is well aware of, of a group that worked every week for over a year, presented a plan to the Board of Education, that plan was rejected. Some committee members were part of a process last year that presented a plan to the board in October, November, and that was paused, and we weren't ready to adopt that. I think there's maybe a sense of cold feet of, we don't want to get too far down a process and then have the board reject it. So while I hear that you are open-minded, as we should be, early in the process, I do think there's value in giving some parameters and guidance, so that the committee doesn't invest time in something that the board would never accept. So it's really finding that balance between having some, some guardrails, parameters, whatever you want to call them, early enough in the process, so they're not spinning their wheels unnecessarily.
Yeah, I think you missed Beryl Leach.
You got it.
Said it perfectly how I was trying to say it over the course of 15 minutes. So, thank you.
Well, let's continue the conversation on the 12. Mr. Moni, you were, you were fairly quiet during the conversation. Do you have any thoughts or questions?
I had some thoughts, I did, or suggestions that came up, but, I mean, the big thing that was concerning to me, which I was unaware of, is how the self-contained kids were at one school for only two years, or whoever it was, and then bounced somewhere else, because anyone that has dealt with them for any period of time knows consistency with them is huge. So that's something I think should be highly thought of, and put a lot of time into a system that can keep them somewhere consistent and not bouncing around. I love the idea of, that Mr. Vanu brought up about, is it possible about the sixth grade moving back, if we have the space, and that's, you know, an easier solution for some of the problems, I think that's something great to look into. But my big end is going to be the financial implications. I'm not saying I'm just going to lean towards the cheapest plan here, but taxes in this town are huge, kind of debate whenever we have any kind of budget season come up, and you know, the town keeps holding over, everyone's had this, however, four of them here in a row going free, so if we now have to increase taxes even more just to put this plan in place, it's really, I think, going to get a lot of people in an uproar.
That's great feedback, thanks. Mr. Greenberg, anything final that you'd like to offer?
No, I think these are the right questions for us to consider as a board, and I appreciate that the committee is looking for our feedback, and so I think we just need some time to ruminate on these questions and get you guys sound answers.
Great.
I would say I agree with that, that we just need some more time to talk about our role in all of this, and how these questions, what they mean to us as far as our direction. I'd love to be able to maybe meeting with that committee at some point, not too far down the road, so we can hear from them as well, and kind of what their mindset is.
I just have one more. I will feel, Kim had this amazing configuration of taking the buildings and coming up with a percentage and numbers of usage and stuff. Has that, do we have, I mean, do we have that, or are we using that number? Like, do you remember from that committee meeting, there was a, I just don't know if this board's ever seen that, that information.
All of that has been moved into a different drive.
It is. Is it our drive in there? Okay. What was that called? Do you remember?
I don't remember, there were so many.
Okay, I'll go in and find it and make, I just thought it was some super, like, relevant, helpful information.
There's a matrix that we're trying to build, like, how many rooms are available? How many full-size classrooms? How many smaller spaces? What's the square footage? How many kids are in it? I mean, it's that sort of information, and Mr., come on.
Galbo?
No.
Carr?
Mr. Carr, he's working on putting that together, right? So it's already, a lot of it's already in there.
Okay, cool. I appreciate that, Chair Fuld, that was nice.
Okay.
Thank you, Tony, for being with us tonight. Thank you.
But I would ask, you know, what, these are things, these are questions that really start running through your head, you know, and I thought you put that well. How many plans would you want, and then what, what kind of categories could each of the plans start to think about that might be driven from some of the other questions? You know, and Mr. Moni, your feedback on the fiscal piece, I think is pretty solid. So, okay.
I try to stay quiet, I have a tendency for talking over. So I try to just sit back and.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you very much. I'm going to do something there, so.
Thank you, Tony.